Meeting of May 9th. Thank you, Tara. To order and we'll lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America into the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll start off with introduction of members, starting with our student representative.
I'm Maya Gagne. I'm the Student Council Treasurer at Blackstone Millville Regional High School.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Carrie Godett, Blackstone.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Joe Spagna, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pillgalleranias, Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
And Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Okay, and I'll hand over the floor to you, Maya. There's a student representative report.
So I have some updates and happenings at the high school. So first, just the brief announcement. There's going to be an MCAS math boot camp held for all 10th grade students next week to prep for MCAS testing. And today, there was an assembly held today, which was a pre-prom assembly, which educated students about distracted driving, which was presented by Think Fast. Last week, we had our National Honor Society induction ceremony, where new members and officers for the 2024-2025 school year were inducted. Next up, I've got sports update. Girls tennis, the record is five and six for softball, seven and seven. Baseball had their second win of the season against Nittmuck on Monday. It's a really good win. That was a great game. And for track, they had a DVC meet at Douglas on 5/14. Our Powderpuff game, which was canceled in November because of the rain, bad weather conditions, has been scheduled for May 20th. And prom is actually tomorrow in Mendon. And 179 students and guests will be in attendance at prom. Our student council this year has been attending some conferences. We went to the state conference in Hyannis, and then we most recently went to a spring conference, at which I was elected the Central District Massachusetts Association of Student Council Secretary. And I'm very honored to be assuming that position and starting to rebuild our student council more. And next year, we're going to be curating our Book of Excellence, so hopefully be recognized as a Gold Council of Excellence at Hyannis next year.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And that is all I have for you guys.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our representatives? Well, thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
Have a lovely evening.
You, too. All right, next on the agenda, consent agenda A, warrants and minutes from April 11, 2024. I will entertain a motion to approve the warrants and the minutes of that meeting. Second. Motion made by Carrie, seconded by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Public forum. Would anybody like to come up and address the school committee? All right. Moving on to school committee agenda. Student recognition, Mass Worcester County Student Scholar. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see all of you and to our friends in the audience. I'd like to introduce this year's 2024 Massachusetts Association of Superintendents Worcester County Scholar recipient. And I'm going to ask Aubrey Ranucci to join us, and if Mom wants to come. And Ms. Fallis, I'd love to have you join Aubrey as well. I don't think Aubrey knew when she got this award that she was going to be recognized repeatedly for this, but if you want to take a seat at the table there, that'd be great. So Aubrey, we're very excited that she's here tonight, and I'm really excited to introduce you to her if you haven't had the pleasure of meeting her yet. And I'm sure Ms. Fallis will have some fabulous words to share about Aubrey as well. But I have to tell you, not only is she our representative from BMR, and we had a chance to honor Aubrey and her peers in March at Holy Cross with a really big luncheon, and just a tremendous celebration, but Aubrey actually did the program for the entire event. So she organized all of the scholars, all of their remarks. She put it all into the actual program, printed it. And as you can imagine, I can be a little meticulous about something, so Aubrey had to go back a few times to do some revisions. I had the opportunity to actually go over and work with Aubrey in class on some of the feedback. And the program was just stellar. So it went out to all of the districts across Worcester County with all of the scholars, their names, their favorite quote. And it was just like, what a blessing that one of our kids actually put that together for the entire event. I think we sent out almost 300. And it says, and it's printed right there, "Made by the print shop Blackstone Millville Regional High School." So it went across the entire Blackstone Valley. It was the first, or Worcester County, it was the first time we did it. BBT has always done them in the past. And when we took it over, we decided we're going to do it ourselves. And so Aubrey, just congratulations on the recognition, but a huge, huge thank you for putting up with me and actually putting together a program that was just stellar. So thank you for that. Ms. Fallis, I'm sure you'll have some...
I would just say, you know, we've been talking about the remarks at graduation, but Aubrey just was at NHS inductions, you're the treasurer, and did a lovely job, so I'm looking forward to that. And we had some laughs at the meeting, at the event, so it was fun. It's fun getting to know her a little bit more. She's a little quiet, but super personality, so we're very lucky.
So we don't want to put you on the spot, but I'll put you on the spot. Is there anything you want to add or say, or do you want to kind of gear up for your address for graduation? Or...
I'm super excited to be able to go up there and thank everybody who helped me get here and wish everybody the best of luck to the next step of their journey.
And your plans for the fall?
I will be attending Bryant University in the fall.
Business.
Business, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we're going to bother you again at the awards night. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Good job. Thanks.
Okay, next up is accept UniBank donation of 2,500 for BMR seniors. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, through Ms. Fallis's hard work and Mr. Jubas' hard work, they were able to get the senior signs covered through UniBank. We may have a UniBank person on our school committee, I'm not sure, I won't disclose that, but a big thank you to that individual as well. Matt, thank you so much for any support. I'm sure you provided a lot through that, but this is such a great thing. And honestly, we were thinking we were going to do them. It was kind of a COVID thing. We didn't think there was a lot of interest until we weren't going to do them. And then we had so much feedback of people expressing just how much they enjoyed them that we found a way. So thank you, Matt, very much. Jill, thank you, and to Mark Jubas for making sure that we can celebrate our students and always possible at the end of their journey.
Did I miss the feedback where people said how much they enjoyed them, or how much they wanted to see them back?
It was informal feedback.
Okay, that's okay. I want to make sure we're reading the same feedback. I'm glad. Thank you very much for all involved to make that, keep that up and running. Next on the agenda is E... Oh, I'm sorry, we got to accept this, huh? I got to probably keep my glasses on more often. So I accept a motion to accept a donation for 2,500 from UniBank.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Tara, seconded by Tara. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
For the record.
Matt Upstein, let the record show you. Special thanks to UniBank and all efforts put into that matter. Next on the agenda is ENDD 2024 Mini Grant, Office of District Attorney Joseph Early for $1,200. Mr. Superintendent, do you, would you like to...
Yeah, just, it's a grant that this high school, again, Jill, Keith, I believe Joe Nimzik have gone after, you know, year after year. We're very pleased that DA Early has awarded us the grant again this year, and I believe it's post-prom, post-graduation celebratory events and activities. So that's what the $1,200 will go towards.
Okay, any further discussion on, anything to add? I'll take a motion to accept the grant from District Attorney Joseph Early for $1,200.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. Mr. Superintendent, revise school committee calendar for 2024-2025 calendar.
Yes, there was one error on the calendar that we reviewed at our last meeting. So in your packet, you have the updated calendar. The change, there's only one, was to remove the second meeting in April because it had fallen on the school vacation week. So there will be one meeting in April, and it will be April 10th.
Take a motion to approve the revised 2024-2025 school committee calendar.
So moved.
Second. Tara, seconded by Chuck. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. MSBA update, vote to construct an OPM selection subcommittee.
So in your packet, you have, Lynn, Tara, do you want me to run through that? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, sure. In your packet, you have two things, two MSBA documents. The first is the closeout on the Millville Boiler Project. So we just wanted to make sure that you had all of the documentation for that. This project's been long done and closed, but just so the school committee has a record of the official closeout, and the MSBA just approved that at their April 24 meeting. So that's just for your paperwork. Underneath the OPM selection, behind the closeout for the Millville Boiler Project, you have an additional packet. There are two separate pieces of information in there. The first, or the cover page, is titled OPM Selection Subcommittee, which we'll talk about in one minute. The packet just, or the piece just behind that, the second document, is the Request for Onus Project Manager, Management Services. So the OPM, as our school committee is aware, is the firm that will end up leading us through the feasibility study, and then should the overall project get approved, will lead us through the construction phase of the project as well. So this is, as you would imagine, is a really important selection process. So right now, we do have a OPM Selection Subcommittee that has been approved by the School Building Committee. That is that first page. And before any action is taken on that, the job of this subcommittee is to create the Request for Services proposal. So we've had one meeting. We met Monday. It was a virtual meeting, and have started working through reviewing other RFSs or Request for Service proposals that other school building projects have put forward. So we all have our homework between our last meeting and our next meeting, which is this upcoming Monday, which is to essentially go through the criterion that is given to us from the Mass School Building Authority and essentially assign points. So we have to determine, you know, how important is each one of these criteria, and then establish a point system. That's important because when we put out the RFS, it will show the firms what we value and what we're looking for in an OPM. We will then use a similar process when we're interviewing the different firms, once we collect their proposals, to assign points to those individual firms. And then, of course, the firm with the highest, you know, number of points would be the one that we would recommend moving forward with. This is all really important because this subcommittee is going to work through the process of not just the RFS, but collecting all the proposals themselves, reviewing the proposals, interviewing the firms. The School Building Committee will be part of that process as well, but the OPM Selection Subcommittee will be doing, you know, for lack of a better term, it's a lot of the grunt work to get all of this done and all of this in place. That firm will have an opportunity, the school committee will have an opportunity to meet with that firm as well, will certainly bring the OPM in front of the school committee for discussion and questions. This is all really important because we're working on a timeline that the Mass School Building Authority has put forward regarding their approval of our OPM selection. And MSBA has to approve the OPM. And they only meet on a very kind of strict calendar for this particular purpose. There's a meeting August 5th, and the meeting after that for OPM approval is on September 9th. So we are going to be shooting for the September 9th meeting, and we have a timeline, all very well laid out, to make sure that we meet that, you know, barring any situation that, you know, we were not aware of or is out of our control. But that's the target we're looking for. Tara, did I miss anything, or any of the other school building committee members? So what we are looking to do is have the school committee approve the OPM Selection Subcommittee that has been approved already by the School Building Committee. And my apologies, there are a lot of committees in all of this work, so forgive me for all of the terminology, but that's where that sits.
I'll make a motion to approve the OPM Selection Subcommittee. Mary Bolso, Matthew Plant, Sarah Peters, Joseph Spagna, and Jason DeFalco.
Motion made by Chuck.
Second.
Seconded by Tara. Any other discussion? Well, I'll just say it's a lot of work, and I thank these people for stepping up because there's a lot to do, and it's generally in a tight crunch timeline, so. With that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. I got to go back to school committee agenda item E. Thank you, Tara, that I skipped right over. A vote to reappoint the superintendent to the BIKO Board of Directors.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. Any other discussion? Thank you, Jason, for keeping an eye on that portion of the district as well. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. And moving on to authorize the Director of Finance and Operations as signatory for Rockland Trust, OPEB.
In your packet, there are two, this is really just procedural, but there are two Rockland Trust handouts. The first are the current signatories, and the second is just, will be the page where we'll update adding Joe, so that Joe can do all of the work and the interactions and the, you know, essentially the account management and all of that, which I think to date, we have somewhere around 380,000, I believe, the last...
Roughly.
Around there, yeah, that I saw. So we can't do that without the school committee.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to authorize the Director of Finance and Operations, Joseph Spagna, as signatory on the Rockland Trust, OPEB.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Matt and Chuck. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. Reappoint Long DePietro Gonzalez, LOP, as District Legal Counsel.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Any other discussion? This is a standard annual appointment of our current legal counsel. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. Discussion on excess and deficiency overview, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, in your packet, you will see a handout that's just titled Excess Deficiency calculation, fiscally year 2024. And if you look at the total unencumbered excess and deficiency funds, we're around 225,031, which is where we thought we were going to land. So we just wanted to make sure that, I know that everybody got the email, but that we had it on record as reviewing. So no action needed there.
And, Mr. Superintendent, just to clarify for people at home, the town accountants in both towns get a copy of these annually?
Correct.
So the towns are well aware of what we have in excess and deficiency annually?
That's right. And the town administrators also get the same notification as well to that point.
Although sometimes they may have a bit of amnesia on receiving that information, but they do, they do get it. Report of the superintendent is next on the agenda.
Great, thank you. So very exciting tonight. We have some really great updates to share. The first is a review of our program of study for BMR. So I will ask Mrs. Fallis to join us and walk through, and you might want to get cozy, Mrs. Fallis, I think you have a couple of items up here tonight. But the first is a handout that is also in your packet that is titled BMR HS Program of Study Changes for 24-25, and Jill will walk us through that first.
Sure, I was here before, and I mentioned a couple of new AP courses, AP offerings coming soon, but we have our enrollment, we've got our AP Pre-Calc. I believe there are 22 students enrolled in AP Pre-Calc for next year. Again, this is a new course, but in a equity piece, now if students are not in advanced math, they still could take an AP course in math at the end of their senior year. So they could take Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, and they could take AP Pre-Calc if they would like to, so you wouldn't feel like, okay, I already missed the boat because I can't take, and the only math was AP Calculus. We actually have three AP math courses. We'll be offering AP Stats, AP Calc, and AP Pre-Calc. So that's three in the math department. We also have the AP Seminar, which is going to eventually will, is basically our honors English 10. It is a skills-based class. There are, I want to say 21, 20, yes, already enrolled, projected to enroll in that next year, so we're really excited about this. We're also offering four new elective courses, which is, you've got a little screenshot of the flyer that's around school. So we're still pushing the increase in enrollment for that. That is going to be a couple more weeks for that, but nutritional science, that helps us because Jill Cole will be coming in our reconfiguration. Once the budget's passed, we will have Jill Cole have the opportunity to do that. She's already sent me amazing work on that, so we're excited for that. A Manufacturing Four, which is Civil Engineering and Architecture, which is a PLTW course. We're very fortunate that this is the last year of our grant, and there's a chunk of money that we haven't spent yet, and we'll be able to spend, I'm spending lots of money. It's all grant money, I promise, Joe, and that it'll be, it'll be ready to go for that. Also looking at an alternative for mindfulness as a PE requirement. Mrs. Ducharme is looking into developing that, as well as the independent study. And so the independent study, which came directly out of the next piece that we'll talk about, this actually came out of a topic that we'll be talking about, the grant study, but if there is something that we are not offering, that you would like an opportunity to offer, it is a student-generated course. So they would actually work with me personally. I have one student who is interested in studying and learning more about real estate, and so it'll be a combination of interviewing some people, doing some major projects, but creating your own rubrics and things like that. And I actually had a student yesterday ask that he'd like to, and I don't know the proper word, but he'd like to learn about more of the embalming, mortuary-type business. I said, that's definitely not something we have on VHS, Virtual High School. So I'm going to be learning a lot as far as that is concerned. On the backside of that paper, just to let you know, next Wednesday, the 15th, from 5:00 to 6:00, we'll have our incoming eighth graders coming into the, coming into school, and I just wanted to give you an update on what they will, the course offering that they will have. Obviously, you've got your Math, Science, Social Studies, English, and a half-year of PE. They will also have full-year elective opportunities of band, chorus, and Spanish. Half-year options are art, STEM, and a music appreciation course, but more importantly, I've found a way, and we're very excited, that they will, there will be, if you are not taking two full-year courses, you will take an exploratory. And the exploratory are going to be 10-week courses, all quarter courses, and those are the four things that we're exposing them to, career exploration, so looking at doing some of the early work with career inventories and interest inventories, and what does that mean, and where might I want to go? And we're going to be starting, again, coming from something that we learned in our grant that you'll be hearing from soon, starting a who am I page and tracing your evolution from eighth grade until your senior year, and how your career interests are changing and your interests are moving and evolving. We'll have Lego Robotics, a manufacturing, and a creative writing to work on and improve our writing without it feeling like we're doing noun, verb, adjective, all of that good stuff. So lots of good stuff. I'll be presenting this to our families next week. Any questions?
I believe it's mortician is what you...
Yes, but it's, he had this like word, something ology, it was an ology thing, and I was like, I don't know anyone you're talking about. And he was like, yeah, I want to be an embalmer. I was like, okay. I love it. So I think I'm going to be learning a lot. I'm not sure if we'll find, I'm sure we can find somebody to let him visit.
I did write down a...
Job shadowing. There you go, thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I meant that, like, a business that...
Yeah, oh, yes.
These are some great additional offerings for next year, and I know the high school's been really hard at work putting together the schedule for the eighth graders to come up, so...
We're working on that.
It's really great to see that we'll be adding the eighth-grade courses to the program of study.
Yes.
It kind of, it's symbolic, but it's also really important, and it shows the direction we're moving in, so I appreciate that. And the additional courses that we're going to have to offer our students. Our high school is second to none in the region.
Really excited. And the teachers who have stepped up are like, super excited and energized, so I just love that.
All right, so we just need a motion to approve the changes.
Make a motion.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, no, I can't make them.
Make the motion to approve the BMR HS 24-25 program of study as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Matt, seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. Nice work, Ms. Fallis, to you and your team on that. Our second is an update on our learning excursions that, actually, some of our folks around the table have been on, too.
So this has been a really interesting year. I started out last year after a conversation with Jason, and, oh, thank you. You might have to do that, so I forget, I'm really bad at that, multitasking. We started, I started off with a conversation of what makes us unique and what makes us special. And it was a conversation with our leadership team and wanting to do, you know, what, how does BMR stand out against other schools in the area, what makes us special? And it was a great conversations we had with a number of people, and so I went on this kind of excursion this year of how do we do school differently? What does high school look like? You know, the COVID gave us an opportunity and a gift to do things differently, and I feel like the farther we get away from it, the more people want to go back to normal, but it's not normal. So in echoing and pairing that with where everyone is welcome and belongs is what we were looking for. So I was a part of four, actually, learning opportunity, thank you, four learning, this is why I have you, four learning opportunities this year, and three of them are in here. One of them was with Dr. DeFalco on our Equity in Action piece, but this first one is, was from the Discovery, the 1-8, it's part of a PLTW program. We got to go to these five schools. I went with Carol Conti, who was a history teacher and team lead, and Nicole Sacco. We got to visit Plymouth North, two schools in Boston, and then we traveled to Washington, DC, to see Columbia Heights Educational Campus and Dunbar High School. The graphic that you have here is a large sticky that we were going through and looking at applied learning, and what does applied learning look like? And it's talking about those five pillars of real-world learning. and what does applied learning look like? And it's talking about those five pillars of real-world learning, some of the soft skills that we have, or we call them transferable skills, collaboration and communication, which are part of our Portrait of the Graduate, and professional practice, and how do we, how can we bring more hands-on learning to our students to increase engagement? And that has been, that's been a focus that we've been looking at. Other departments have been looking at that, and it's been part of a professional practice goal. So this was a wonderful experience to see, to see all of these different schools and how they're doing things, and how they're doing things differently. A number of things that we learned from here transferred into what you'll be hearing shortly. So BMR then went to Vermont. We were there the 9th through the 12th. I'm very fortunate to be joined. Carrie was there, these lovely women, two ladies in the back. Also joined me along with Carol Conti and Christine Shanahan from our, our school. But I'm going to let the ladies tell them about the experience.
So each school was very different in its own way, and each had many takeaways. And whether that was, ooh, we want to bring this back, or, ooh, we do not want to bring this back. So our first takeaway, ready?
Ready.
Oh, one more.
There's our title slide. There we go.
All right. This is part, this is the presentation that we did for the group at the end. So this is coming right from our quarter, the quarter turns was what we were talking about.
So each picture has on the left what we currently do at BMR, and then on the right what our quarter turn will be and what we want to do. So our first is mentoring, and currently we connect our incoming eighth graders with the student leadership team. And we also pair incoming eighth-grade EL students with an EL mentor. And then after our experience up in Vermont, we want to form a better partnership between the student leadership team and elementary classrooms. And then also for our advisory, we currently have student voice to increasing, whoa. We use more student voice to increase engagement, and then we also implement- Am I reading this wrong? Yeah.
This is what we want to see. This is the second, this is the second slide. My apologies. So in the original, you're right, I didn't tell you that. In the original slide, it was one slide of what we do, and then the second slide is what we want to do. So these are the what we want to do. All right. My apologies. Bad editing on my part.
So for advisory, we want to use more student voice to increase engagement, and then also implement one-to-one conversations for connections and data points and feedback. And then we also want to incorporate more team-building exercises to develop a sense of community around BMR.
Okay. Currently at BMR, we have student, no.
This is the new one, the program that I mentioned, yep.
Okay, this is the new pilot program, the new program. So what we got out of Vermont is that we want to have a student and teacher collaboration on independent student-centered curriculums. So one big thing is the student choice and voice, which was a big part of the Vermont schools because they had a lot of student leadership programs. And we just right now, like, we have a lot more, but they had many that were unique. And even if they were smaller, they like all had kind of a niche that was really cool to see. We want to create more goals and connections that correlate to the Portrait of a Graduate. And we want to create a rubric for success research and hands-on learning feedback and reflection. And then also, we want to explore more interests and passions of the world around us, which- Yeah, which is for internships and the independent study that we're adding. And this was really seen in Vermont with the Renaissance program at Twinfield High School. They were a really small school. They had 400 kids, K through 12. But so they obviously didn't have a lot of courses that met each and every student's needs. So they had a Renaissance teacher who would basically take whatever a student wanted to learn or skill, education, whatever that may be, and would find a way to make that possible. So we met one girl who, they only offered Spanish, and she wanted to learn Chinese or Japanese, I think. And Mandarin, both of them. So they found a way and a tutor for her to learn that. And then also, we had another boy that said that he was learning psychology and dog training. So I thought that was pretty cool.
So that was a really interesting, it was- Anything else? It was long. This, like, our brains hurt. We were exhausted. We thought we were going to hit Ben and Jerry's and be all set, like, we were like, it was non-stop.
We also, though, there were a lot of times where we got to break out groups where, like, I was in a panel with other school committee members, and Jill was off with other principals. And you would hear what schools, like, in Massachusetts were doing, and I would be like, oh, we have Portrait of a Graduate. You already have that? Like, we already have that. We've had that for a while. And just to hear how far ahead we are on some things, but then to get little ideas that we could take and tweak and make our own. And of course, the girls can attest that as soon as they would find out from someone, they'd be like, that's your principal? We love your principal.
I'm very shy. So, no, we had, it was, it was great. It was a great, it was a great mix of, it was a great learning opportunity. I would take these guys anywhere. And additionally, I will say, student leadership and student voice has been something that they have been thinking about, and they are taking action. And I cannot say enough about these two, and I'm so happy I have them for two more years. They're not seniors, they're not juniors, you know? And, you know, Izzy and Grace are already looking at how are we going to make an impact tomorrow? So I am blessed to, I couldn't have picked two better people, and the whole, the whole team, but we were, we were tired. And then to, to wrap this all up, this next piece is the MyCap piece, which is, comes out of the counseling department. But our counseling team, it's not just our counseling team, our team lead, Lisa Rounds is on this. We also have Rachel Bloomstead, who serves on this council, who is one of our special education teachers. Cassie Lesperens, who is our English teacher, but also does our advisory program. Lindsay Carrera is another counselor, and myself. You are, you do have to have an administrator sitting on this piece. We've done four workshops for the MyCap, and it is a DESI initiative in looking at career and college readiness. And we have been fast at work. Throw the next one. I just, there's an example of one of the things, this was, this was, again, echoing kind of what Carrie said. This was really very gratifying because I can't tell you how many people, I think every single group that was there took a picture of what we're, what we're already doing. MyCap has three pillars, and that's the personal, social, career development, education, and then the academic career and college planning. And they were amazed at all of the things that we're already doing. So, and then the other picture of that is our scope and sequence, that we will actually have a advisory curriculum, scope and sequence curriculum, starting with the eighth grade. So we will be ready to welcome them, and they will be ready to go. One new thing that we have with another grant that Jill has spearheaded is allowing us to have, it's not Navigate 360 now. It's, it is still, Navigate 360 is a social emotional program that has built-in lessons that we can already include. They're meeting, they will continue, this group will continue to meet till the end of June to work on how are we going to have, we're going to have a clear scope and sequence from eighth grade. And eighth, ninth, and 10th will be more of a career exploration. 11th and 12th will be the actual implementation of what are we doing? And hopefully culminating, I mean, the pie in the sky is that every senior would graduate with an internship experience. That's our forward vision. So this all wrapped up into this one nice little education of Jill Fallas. And some of the moves that you're seeing are happening right from that. We've been having conversations that came out of Vermont about what do we do with college prep and honors classes? And if we want honors students to be independent thinkers and motivated, you know, can we include them in the same and give kids opportunities to take and earn honors credit for students that might not even think that they could? Or want to think, oh, I can't take an honors class, but really the honors programs are extensions of the learning that they're already doing, and they're going to be student-proposed learning ideas. Like, okay, we're doing psychology. I would like to earn the honors credit, so we're studying the brain. What's something, what's, what's some aspect I'd like to know? I want to do a research on, I want to do a research project on visualization in sports, and how the brain helps you perform better by visualizing before, I'm looking, thinking high jump because I used to do that. Oh, I'm looking right at you. So you're my, you're my target audience, you know? And so you would be able to go and dive deep into that. It's not something that the teacher is going to say, here, pick three, here's three options, you pick three. So we're really, that, that student voice was so evident in all of my visits. And this would have been, I visited now nine, nine schools in this, this year, and I'm just, we're ready. I'm inspired.
All right, thank you very much. Any follow-up questions from the committee?
You can ask, I wish you was there.
Absolutely.
I, I would love to thank the parents and the students and our staff that went on. That was a lot of time. You all put a lot of time into this, but there was the, there was the work before the trip. There was the trip, the work after the trip.
Learning walk? They did a learning walk?
Which is tremendous. And so particularly to our students, and I think I said this to Izzy in an email last night, like, we need really good leaders in all facets of, of all of the work that we are doing. So keep that visionary perspective and bring it to everything that you do. Because, and, and one of the things that I noticed that is, and it's kind of threaded through all of this, is the idea of lifting others. So, right, leading is really about lifting others. And I can see clearly that that is the vision here in terms of how do we lift and lead others to, to aspire to things that are greater than they probably ever imagined. So keep up the good work, keep that focus. We really need good, like, critical thinking, right, good leadership. So a big thank you to both of you, and to Ms. Fallas for continuing to find these opportunities and then bring them back, right? We're not just sitting and getting this PD or these experiences. We're actually taking them and mobilizing it into our next steps. And I think we're seeing that here tonight, and to any of our families or friends watching at home and thinking about, you know, what type of high school experience do you want for your individual child? Again, I will say it, there is not a high school that I think is even close to the work that BMR is doing. There's just not. They might look fancy, they might have fancy titles, or one particular good team, or one, but you look at the core of everything that we're doing, and we are lifting every facet of that high school, whether it's instruction, whether it's this type of, you know, post-secondary work, whether it's athletics. We just had important interviews today, you know, for our athletics student life director. The high school is absolutely on the move and moving in an incredible direction. So thank you to everybody for your work on that.
And we can't wait for the eighth grade to join us.
Just to kind of follow that up, one of the neatest parts about all this was like watching the staff who comes to present to us here. And we would go into these schools and immediately they'd be talking to each other. We'd get back on the bus, and they'd be laying out like, well, if we take this advisory block and we change it like this, and we tweak the schedule like this. I mean, they, it was a constant conversation where they were trying to figure out how, the bright spots that we were seeing, how do we add those to what we were already doing? So, and I know you've told us many times, like, take you up on a learning walk. Going through the high school with Jill and her team to see what's actually being done in the school was amazing. Like, I don't think enough people outside know what we do there.
Send me an email. I'd love to have you come walk through. Anytime.
May I ask, the program study changes, that was before you went on this? These were being proposed before you went on this visit, or?
So the majority of them, yes, with the exception of the student learning experience, I added that late. The last one, the extended learning experience, that came directly out of, that came directly out of this. And then the one-to-one interviews, so I have a really strong leadership team. In fact, the leadership team was kind of hijacked by Officer Nimsik. He has, he's like, next thing I hear, they're like, can the leadership team, Student I L T come down? I'm like, wait a second, that's on my kid. They're going to be presenting and coming down and doing programming at the middle school about vaping. And they've done an amazing job. And so this, this idea of the, we're going to train these guys to go out and have, they call them empathy interviews, but just what's going on? How was your, how was your day? What does it look like? How can this, what does it look like to be more engaged? You know, do you know what it means to be a charger? And, and we're going to do that. But that, that specifically came through, and I'm, I am going to carve out time to be the advisor. I want to see this done right, and so I'm going to, I'm going to take these kids, learn about embalming, and, and go with that.
Great. Anyone else? Well, thank you, and congratulations on all your hard work, and looking forward to see the results over the next couple of years.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Next, I'd like to invite Mary Colonino, our lead coach. Mary's going to just give a brief update on our summer programming. Talk a little bit about what we are offering for our BMR, for our Charger Nation in Summer '24.
Hello.
Hi.
I know that you have this already in your packets. So the, the elementary school will be having two sessions, and it's going to be math and literacy enrichment, and also summer safety again with, for grades one and two. We're going to keep three, four, and five together because of, because of the grant. So they will be doing the 21st Century Grant, and that will go from July 15th to August 8th. And again, we'll have credit recovery for the middle school and the, the high school also, and that will be at the high school. An extended school year will be at the complex as well. And we will have enrichment camps too. So far, we have music, art, and phys ed. We're looking for some more. I have the coaches, and Patrick Rosendale will be running the program. So he's coming up with some ideas. We're meeting next week for some, some more, hopefully, some more things that kids can get involved in. I'm going to also do the ELL enrichment again this summer. It was pretty successful last summer. So we're going to do that for our, our ELL students again for language acquisition. And we're going to try to do a STEM summer science program, either bring people in from, like, like an organization, or, or if we can do that, maybe, I've talked to Jill Fallas, maybe having some of our science teachers run it. But it would be like for fun, not, it's not summer school. So it would be hands-on activities.
So those are current seventh graders?
Yes, just for the, so, yeah, so the, yeah, incoming eighth graders. And we still will have our ongoing wraparound services and athletic clinics throughout the summer.
And the complex is going to be a very busy place.
Yes.
With our special education extended school year. It's a smaller program, but that will be there as well. So it's going to be a very busy place.
And once we determine our next steps with our athletic and student life director, we'll be talking about the summer clinics and things for athletics. I know the captains always do a great job of setting up, you know, captains' practices. And, and one of the lovely individuals that just spoke with the committee has a great idea, Izzy, of how to get our fall athletic leaders to run essentially some athletic camps with the middle school kids before the school year is out.
She actually mentioned that when we were in Vermont.
Yeah, she's really, so we're meeting next week. We're going to have a Google Hangout, Jill, myself, Mary, and Izzy to lay out all the details for it, set up dates, time, schedule, help get the kids organized so that we can actually, and I think the gist of it is showing the kids, like, you know, you may, maybe you've never played soccer before, or, you know, volleyball, or football, or whatever, but it's okay, like, come up. Like, let's work with the upperclassmen. They're going to, you know, train the kids and do these workshops and kind of clinics during the school day to get some interest. Hopefully, that'll drum up some interest so that when we set up these other captains' clinics and captains' practices, we'll get more kids that will come out. So we're excited about Izzy taking that on. Great leadership there. So we'll be a busy summer.
Busy summer.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Jill's going to do an overview of our grade reconfiguration work. If you were one of the audience members last night, although Joe is the only one.
One of us, too.
I think a lot of you were zooming, a lot of you are watching the, yeah, watching the livestream. So to the, yeah, if you didn't have a chance to tune in, we had the public forum last night to give updates on all the grade reconfiguration work. We did an in-person and a livestream. So the, the in-person audience was Joe and Jenny.
Yes.
And everybody else streamed, so it's totally fine. So we're going to, we actually have the link we're going to send out to- So we're gonna, we actually have the link we're going to send out to families tomorrow and staff tomorrow night, so people can tune in over the weekend if they want. But Jill, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, just some of the highlights of that evening, because you can watch the video. But just as a reminder, we are going from four administrative teams, four school-based teams down to three. So again, we have our pre-K through three, which is Millville Elementary School at the complex. We have our four through seven, which is now our middle school, and our eight through 12 at the high school. And just some of the things we talked about is all staff notification, all staff have been notified, those who will not be returning as a result of the reconfiguration, and those who are returning and those who may be going to a different spot, as well as the entire staff building meetings to discuss those changes. The building organizations, the principals have organized where things will be going, classrooms, specials, and staff has been involved and made aware of that. One of the big things that our principals are doing now, especially where the, I think our, the school that has the most, I would say, transition of staff, new staff coming together at our middle school. I know Jenny has been working with the, that group of teachers. There was a, actually, we had a phone meeting at one point with all the staff that was going to be involved of what's working, what do they see the middle school look like? But bringing them together through I L T meetings at a four through seven to bring them together, it could be at staff meetings during P L C. So all of those things are ongoing. I know Jill has mentioned, and she's mentioned several times, she's been chomping at the bit to get those eighth graders with us up here at the, up at the high school. So she's gone down, she's gone down to the middle school, she's got to visit, meet the teachers who are there, already making her presence known with all the students. So there's not going to be, absolutely know who the principal, Mrs. Fallis is when they hit the high school, so she's ready to go. And with Christina, basically she has her kiddos and she'll be taking in, keeping her students there and bringing in the new preschool. Staff hiring, that is something that is ongoing. And as I mentioned, I think last night, that we are looking for a candidate that fits. We just don't look for bodies. Goal is to get them done before the school year ends, but if we don't have that right fit, we will continue to look. We talked a little bit about the proposed bus times. As I mentioned last night, we listened to all stakeholders, including families. There was some concerns about the busing, how is that going to happen? So we were able to work with our bus company to come up with, again, totally budget neutral using, you know, the same amount of buses, or actually less buses, but the routes, to have three different routes. So our pre-K through, actually K through three will have one route and then our four through seven and our high school. And I did mention the times last night, but as a reminder, it was, our high school is 7:25 to 1:52. Our middle school is 8:07 to 2:32. And Millville is, at the complexes, 8:55 to 3:10 at this point. And we did talk about the fact that there may be just a little bit of wiggle room in that middle, because we did do some adjustments at the beginning and the end, but it's all going to depend on how the bus, the bus runs go. So we had those out there. Courses and students, we currently have our student management system in Aspen, which is X2. Courses have been added in there in the build. Our students have been transitioned over, so those things are all working and staff as well. And we also have a moving timeline that's been sent out to the staff. I know our facilities director, Scott, put that all together. It's been sent out to the staff. And we have a pretty tight timeline. We, we are, you know, people are already starting to look through those clauses that probably housed years and years and years of stuff that no one has seen in a while. So kind of sorting through that, so stuff, as stuff moves out, new stuff can come in. Our open house, celebrations are still on, that was a big concern. Well, of course, we'll be starting that off with our graduation, but I know we have our eighth grade celebration, our fifth grade celebration, and then we have our kindergarten graduation that are still being scheduled. Open houses, I'm going to bring that up because I believe I had that on our phone, my phone. Our nights that are coming up, I know we have on the 21st, the current grade three going into four, there's a family night from six to seven here at the middle school for our current grade three. On the 22nd, it's the current grade four, and on the 23rd, it's the current grade five. And those times on those days are all from six to seven here. And then we also have our high school, which I think Jill mentioned earlier, the 15th. Yep, from five to six at the auditorium. So we really encourage anyone to be able to come out, meet the staff, get a sense of the building, you know, administration, and hear about what's going to move forward for next year. And I think, I can't think of anything else I may have forgotten from last night, some of the highlights. Anything else?
That was it.
Okay, great.
And again, we'll send the link out tomorrow, so if you, it's about a half hour, if you have some time and you want to check it out. Moving on to FY '25 budget update, just a couple of quick headlines. We had a Millville Finance Subcommittee, Committee Meeting, excuse me, a week ago, Monday, I believe. And happy to share that they did, the Finance Committee in Millville did support the Certified School District Budget. You might remember there was a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen in Millville to reduce our budget $100,000. The Finance Committee did not support that recommendation. They supported the full requested amount. So we're very pleased about that. We had an opportunity this Monday, this past Monday, to meet with the Blackstone Finance Committee. And it was not the public hearing, that public hearing is the, this upcoming Monday, May 13th. But we had a chance to answer any questions that the Finance Committee had about our FY '25 budget. It was a very productive, positive conversation, so we were, we were really pleased about that. And then, as you know, on Monday, the 13th, we have Millville's annual town meeting. And then on the agenda, there is a tentative meeting, a school committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the 14th, if necessary. And so, so far, so good. I think everything's moving forward the best it can with all of the reconfiguration and consolidation plans. I think one of the things that has been most helpful in this whole site, budget cycle, is just the constant communication with the Boards of Selectmen, the town administrators, the finance committees, the community, you know, even thinking about last night. You know, it's, it's not a bad thing that we didn't have a huge turnout, right? If, usually people come to things if they have a ton of questions, they don't know what's happening. So I don't see that as a, as a, as a bad sign at all. So I think as we continue to move through the last couple of pieces of our budget process, that being Millville's meeting on Monday and then Blackstone's annual town meeting on May 28th, I'm hopeful that, that those budgets will go through.
If I could just add, Superintendent, unrelated to our school budget, the, the Board of Selectmen in, in Millville had a warrant article for the 90, additional 90,000 for the water maintenance as well as a budget item for it. And so they had it out of the budget as a warrant article. That got shot down by three, the chairman and the vice chairman of the School Committee, Board of Selectmen, were in favor of it, but it didn't pass. It had to be a separate warrant article, but the Finance Committee on that Monday night did vote to put it into the, the operating budget. You know, so that'll be the motion at town meeting. So they are, that is a step in the right direction for consistency and funding the maintenance of the water operation.
Thank you for, yeah, no, thank you for adding that. Sorry, I missed it.
Well, it had nothing to do with the school budget, really.
Yeah.
Yes and no, yeah.
Definitely happy that was put back. And then just lastly, in your packet, you also have an overview of the Class of 24 End of Year Events. There's a lot, so I didn't, you know, we didn't want folks to have to kind of dig for any of this information, so everything is listed here for our seniors. And I have to say, I have a senior right now and our, our town's high school doesn't really do anything for them. So it, it's really remarkable, the way that our high school sends off our senior class. I mean, it, it really is. We really do a stellar job of making sure that our seniors know just how valued and how special they are and how, you know, proud of them we are and excited, and excited we are to see them take that next step, right? As much as it's always a, a bit sad. But a big thank you to everybody who works to put this all together. And to our School Committee, just a reminder that Class Breakfast is something that all of you sponsor, which is always a really great event. So thank you so much for, for sponsoring that and putting that on. So just so you have it, stick it on the fridge. I know that's where this is going for me, there's a lot. And my last item from my report is actually Jill's going to give an update on our ELL audit.
So we had, I think I mentioned this at a previous meeting, we had tiered focus monitoring with special education, I gave you that little update, but we also had our tiered focus monitoring as part of our English Language learner program. So this is our final, the, the couple of pages that you have here. If you flip over to the second page, you'll see the areas that call E L Es. It goes from one all the way to 18. Those are the specific areas that they come out. They ask us for data for that we have to submit, not only our procedures and protocols, but work samples and student samples and progress reports. So all of that was submitted to them. We did our self-assessment and they verified all of that and gave us our final, I would say, rating, which is either implemented, implementation in progress, partially implemented, not, or not applicable. So if you look on page five of nine, you'll see that almost all but one were fully implemented. And the one that wasn't had to do with certifications. So all teachers now require S E I, which is Sheltered English Immersion. It's like a, it's, I would, yeah, it's an endorsement, it's not a certification. So you can get that by either taking a course, take, or taking an assessment. So at that point, we had, I think there were four or five teachers, we have one right now, and we just give them progress updates. So that individual is actually, you know, in process of getting that taken care of, so we write progress updates. So that was the only thing that they had some feedback on. So we were very happy that we did, did really well on that. And what came out of that, and Mary, I don't know if you have a minute to come up again, I just wanted to share, I, I mentioned that we were, because of this tiered focus monitoring, we were, our liaison reached out to us and asked us, because of the work that we shared with them and what we're doing as what, we're considered a low incident district, they wanted us to share the work that we're doing as part of their Office for, Office for Language Acquisition, O L A yearly presentation. I think they had over 200 people who attended this event. It was all virtual. And when we looked at the agenda, we noticed the other schools that were presenting, we had Brockton and Springfield and Chelsea, like these really large schools, and it was just Little Blackstone Millville. Yeah, Boston. So it was really nice to be able to do this. And they entitled our presentation as Making Great Strides in a Small District. So we were able to present to them and represent Little Blackstone Millville, which was really great to do, the things that we're doing here in our district. So I, this is a copy of the presentation that our slide shows, which are actually up on their site now. We had a nice little group that came to our presentation, and then we had a follow-up question and answer that more came to that one. It was really nice to see. So we were able to tell them about our district, just to give them an overview of our population. We focused our presentation on them, that our district blueprint, and we tried to say to them what we do for our English lang, we do for all kids. It really, truly, we do, it's all means all. There's every single subgroup all the time, every day, and we kind of pulled that out for them. And of course, we had to include some pictures of our kiddos, of our Y, so we were able to show that. And then we kind of went into our what, and we, again, focused it on the blueprint, our how, how are we doing these things? And we went into that, you know, with them. And we tried to stress to the schools that were there, because when we heard some of what are the bigger schools are doing, we're even doing a little bit beyond that. You know, we're taking that extra step, some of the things that we're doing. And you can look through those, I'm not going to read them all. So we talked about the things that we do, and the big thing we tried to focus on is also our families, our English language learner families. And not only, they wanted us to focus on the families, but we talked about how we're preparing our staff as best possible to work with our families as well. It's not just the E S L team, the ELL team, it's everyone doing that together. And we ended it off, actually, when we did our presentation, when we had a Ted Talks, we had Ted Talks at the end of one of our P Ds, which was really great. The tech department set up the stage beautifully. I know it's, it's out there for you to watch, but one of our, our E L students actually was one of our speakers, and we were able to share that at the O L A conference that day. And out of that, we had districts reach out to us and said, I'd love to come and visit your district, how are you doing this? You know, how are you supported? And I think when I, we had jumped into one of the rooms, I had missed the first couple of minutes because, you know, the technology, trying to figure out what room I was going into. They started saying that, yes, our superintendent wants us to do this. And we stressed the fact to them, that's great that you're doing that, but do you have the support? It's not just do you, you roll out a P D, it's, is there a follow-up? Is there a follow-through and are you supported by others? And I know Mary had that conversation with them as well.
So, yeah, I was actually in the room before Jill got in there, and a lot of the teachers were saying, they were all from small districts as well, and they, they said, how do you get to do, like, how do you do all of this? And I, I said, because it starts at the top and that we are superintendent, assistant superintendent model this, it, then, you know, it goes down to the district leadership and then down into the schools, and that's why it works, because there's support. And then Jill came in.
Yes. And I didn't realize she had said that and pretty much said the exact same thing. But we also stressed to them that there is, we get title monies, and one of the titles is called Title III, and if you have a large population of English language, you get extra funds. We don't even get that. We don't have the large funds and we're able to do this within our budget, or we're very lucky, like I know Mary right now, actually, it was this week you started.
Yeah, Tuesday night, we started here, actually. When we had done a, the night that, that Jason met with, with all of the parents, we had a separate one in, for us, for the.
For the reconfiguration.
Families. So at that time, they asked if they, if we could provide any type of ELL services for them. So we actually started last, last Tuesday night. We had 12, we have 12 parents so far. There's a few that want to come next week. And it was, it was really, it was a wonderful night. So they were so thankful and, you know, excited to come back and learn.
So again, we were just very honored to be able to represent.
Yeah.
This district and kind of get our name out there. And again, we had, we've had people now reach out and say, I want to visit you, how do you do this? Can you share this with us? What's this loop like? So it was really nice to know. Like you had said before, when people say you're already doing this, yes, we are, with this, you know, with, with actually no additional funding.
No.
From the state, yeah. So putting little BMR on the ELL map for low incident district.
Nice work. Great work, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next is the Business Office Report, starting with Personal Report.
Yes, that is just to be received and placed on file.
Mr. Benzer.
In your packet, there is the updated expenditure report for you. It's dated the Financial Report General Fund for period 7/1/23 to 5/7/24. I just want to take a moment and just run through the report, just the outline of it and how it's working, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
This is a very different format than how we've seen it in the past.
Essentially, the same information comes directly from the system, it's just laid out differently and grouped differently, I think, to how it's a little bit more relevant for you to see. So going across the top, if you look, it starts with the Certified Budget column. That column is the budget that's been certified by the school department, so that shouldn't change. But there may be movement if there's some budget journal entries that happen, but you'll see that in the report as it goes. The year-to-date is basically the expenditures that have taken place right up to the date of the printing of this report. And that date, it's, not only is it up top in the title, but off to the upper left, you'll see 5/7/24 printed. So everything that we've expended to date is in that column, in each one of these columns. Or whatever revenue we've taken in up to that date is in that column too. And gives you the adjusted remaining budget balance in the next column. Incumbrances is anything that's encumbered, which, you know, anything that's either in process of being processed and approved for payment or waiting to be paid, it's been ordered, those are our open P Os and things. The projected to year-end column, that's a column that I've added to the report. This comes directly from the system, but I manipulate it so I can put these other columns in. That projected to year-end is my projection from the date of the report to the end of the school year, what we think we're either going to take in for revenues or what we may be expending or projecting to expend to the end of the, end of the year. In many cases, like in revenues, we know exactly what our assessments are going to be. We know what our Chapter 70 is going to be. So that's an easy, easy column to fix. For expenditure purposes, though, sometimes we know exactly what our expenditures are going to be, other times it's based on an average. You'd have to look at what we've spent to date, what's the average we're spending each month, and even actually in a couple of these down to the, the day, what we're spending, and then project that out for the remaining period. So that'll allow, it'll fluctuate from month to month, sometimes to the better, sometimes, so, you know, it might be a positive, negative thing that we see. The next column is the total expected, is the type. The next column is the total expected, is a typo on the first page. It should be total projected revenue. And then on the following page is total projected expense, which gets us to the final column, projected budget balance. Positive is a surplus in that line, a negative is a deficit in that line. Just to go down the, the left-hand column under income, I just kind of broke the income up into categories. We have our assessments that will be able to see where we're standing from each town. State aid broken out by chapter seventy, pupil transportation, charter school reimbursements, and choice receiving tuitions. The use of E and D, that's actually built into the budget. And we also have our Medicaid revenue. One thing that's not budgeted is the interest we receive on our bank accounts and our savings. So I've added that line in there to bring us down to our totals. And the expense columns, I pretty much did the same thing. I broke it down into salaries, anything that we, we process through payroll, our group there. Our benefits, any of the benefits for health, dental, life, Medicare, comp, all those other things that grouped into a separate grouping. Then we have our professional services, which is our liability, insurance, our legal services. We've contracted with the transportation company, all those professional services that we outsource for. And then the next column is the different supplies that we are purchasing. General supplies is kind of a larger category of everything. But I did break out the textbooks, custodial, and nursing, because I think it's relevant to see that. Then I brought down, grouped into technology, software, and even the contracts that we have out there. I grouped that all together in one category. Then extracurricular, which right now is athletics and music that's funded through the local general fund. But, but building grounds, all the management and utilities of the buildings, the grounds, and all those areas are all grouped next. The debt is on here, that's actually gonna be coming off. That'll be, that should actually be a hidden column, it shouldn't even be showing up. And you might not even see it because I'm, I've got a complete printout, so.
Yeah, it's not on ours.
All right, good, that's good. Because I meant, I intentionally hid that, because debt shouldn't be on here. It's a separate fund. So I'll make sure I take that off of mind, too.
Well, had you just mean the, like in the spreadsheet?
That's right.
Yeah.
That's correct. Just.
That's a scary word when we talk about budgets.
Take it off, don't worry.
You just mean, you have it on a separate spreadsheet?
Yes, that's correct. I'm tracking that separately.
Thank you for clarifying.
It's not general fund activity. This is just general fund. Then I have the tuitions, both the choice and charter sending tuitions that we pay out. That's reducing our chapter seventy. And then, you know, the other state tuitions, non-public and collaboratives. And then there's the other category with the miscellaneous stuff that we're doing, like the moving expenses from the water issue with, with the elementary school and some other miscellaneous stuff that goes through. The only two things I really would like to point out in this, oh, actually, then we end at, sorry, at the end. You've got your total that I project either a budget or surplus or deficit. And we're about just over a hundred, five hundred and forty-one thousand is projected as of this report, as a surplus. There are two large changes that you, when you look at this, if you look at the revenue line for charter school reimbursement and choice receiving tuition, you see a large increase under the charter school and a large decrease under choice. My understanding, and, and as a full disclosure, I think I'm in the week six here. I'm getting as much of an understanding as I can. My understanding is the state reevaluates the students either coming or going from the district three times a year. The initial, when they set up the, their budget first. Again, it looks like in December, they do another evaluation to adjust the amount that we're either paying or receiving. And they'll do it again at the close of the year, just to make sure that the net at the end, we're paying or receiving exactly what we should based on the students. In December, our charter reimbursements increased from twenty-five thousand two seventy-three per month to forty-five thousand eighty-three dollars a month. So that's a, that was a big, it was a win for us. But on the other end, the choice receiving tuition in December decreased from sixteen thousand six ninety-five down to four thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So the net, it was still netting better than we were, but, you know, we saw that large decrease. And the same thing applies when you go down all the way to the tuitions line, the expenses. It's the same fundamental idea on the sending part, on which they reduce our chapter seventy by. We saw a drop in choice sending from seven, seventy-three thousand thirty-six dollars a month to sixty-eight thousand one hundred and eleven dollars a month. So we're saving money there. But then we also saw an increase in charter in December from seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred and nineteen a month to eight hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars a month. So again, the net there, we lost a little bit. So that's pretty much the report. And like I said, each month, I'll, I'll present this to you. And each month, you'll see some changes, either in the budget line, because we've moved money around, or the reality of what we expect to happen towards the end may change our surplus deficit projection. But at least it gives us a snapshot of where we are at a point in time. Happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
I don't know if we have the answer right now, but if we could get an answer on the athletic line?
Yes. That one is in a deficit situation. I reviewed that with, I think it's Sam or Todd.
Sam.
Sam, thank you. And I would looked at what was expended and what he has encumbered right now. There's quite a bit encumbered in that line. He does feel that he's gonna need to spend that for transport. Main category is transportation for the events and the sporting events that he's dealing with. There is some spending on supplies and materials for the baseball and things like that have already taken place. These already took place before I got here. So there's not much I can do to say we can stop that spending and push it, maybe get it into next years if we can do it, because it's already been done. But we're, I'm hopeful that that eighty-two thousand dollar encumbrance won't be a full eighty-two thousand.
And that's mainly busing, you said, Jill?
Yeah, mainly, mainly it's with, it's a Telstone, right? Yeah. That's mainly what it is. There's a few other, you know, stipends that have to be paid and things like that for some of the staff.
Thank you.
And just as full disclosure, too, I'm still getting an understanding of the chart of accounts. It's a process. So I may be readjusting what's in some of these buckets. If I find that something's there that really doesn't belong there, you might see movement that way, too. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
And National Grid LED lighting project?
Yes, that is a, it's not really a grant to us. The Town of Blackstone has a two hundred thousand dollar grant for weatherization and lighting improvement upgrades. And they're gracious enough to apply ninety-three thousand dollars of that grant to upgrading all the lighting in our middle school, to LED lighting. On top of that, when they, with that grant, the National Grid has also agreed to provide us with fifty thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars of credits or incentives for doing that upgrade. The total project is two hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars with the grant provided by the Town of Blackstone and the incentives provided by National Grid. That leaves about just under a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that they consider a community contribution, which means it's our responsibility. But one thing I found when I was looking at this is, in October of two thousand seventeen, I believe, the district signed a net metering agreement for all the solar panels that are on the buildings. Well, those, that agreement has been generating a lot of credits in each one of these accounts. And I even provided you the latest National Grid invoice for delivery services for the middle school. We have just under a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of credits on that, that one account. So we have not been paying for delivery services. We've been paying for the, you know, the kilowatt usage and things through the, through the other programs that we have. But the delivery services, we haven't been paying for, because it's, it's generating more than we're using. In talking to the, the grantee, which is energy conservation and with National Grid, that we can utilize those credits to pay down this hundred and sixteen thousand dollar liability to us. They'll do that over, I think it's nine hundred, nine hundred, nine thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty cents each month will be on the bill for twelve months until it's paid in full. So that you'll start to see those credits will come down on these bills. But I do want to fully disclose, I don't anticipate this happening because the way the generation's working, it's far exceeding, exceeding our usage. There could be a rate increase, there could be high usage. There could be reasons why we absorb those credits faster than paying off the debt. So there, is there a possibility that I can come to you and say, we ran out of credits and we still owe fifty thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars that we have to pay for? It is possible, highly unlikely, though. You know, these credits have been growing for quite some time.
We would put a mechanism in place, I would imagine, as a school committee, right, to?
To catch that if.
To catch that if it were to.
Yeah.
Yep.
We get the, we get these updates monthly?
Ah, for the, the, yes.
From National Grid?
Absolutely.
So we'll track the, we'll track the credits that are being used each month?
I'm actually going back right now. I, I dealt with the same situation down in Rhode Island with wind turbines. They purchased three wind turbines and we're watching those net metering credits, too. It did the same thing, we're just paying the debt service. I'm gonna build the same spreadsheet where I can see every month what the trending is for these credits, how much we have. There's something called a Schedule Z also, that once or twice a year, you can reallocate credits from another account to another account if you needed to. So my feeling is if we were to exceed the hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of credits, we'd request them to move some credits from another building over to this one. And this is, this is also phase one. It's, I think it's about half the school. Phase two, they'll come forward, probably offer the same thing, but we'll have to reevaluate phase two to make sure we have the same situation where there are credits to help us fund that instead of hitting our general fund or another fund for those expenses. Thank you to Town of Blackstone, by the way.
Do we need to take any action on?
It doesn't say, I mean.
I didn't think so, but I wasn't, we left it as an, as an information arm, but.
I mean, it doesn't hurt either to. I don't know if there's, especially if we're gonna be using grant money and.
Credits.
Credits.
Yep.
It doesn't hurt to have the support of the school committee, just in case you have an op.
Yep.
Like these, how these processes go, it could be, you, you're up and running. We don't have to wait two weeks or three weeks for a vote, too.
And we do have to sign something with National Grid saying where we understand that we're responsible for the hundred and fifteen thousand, so.
I mean, maybe like a, there is no agreement that you have to enter. Is there an agreement that?
There's an agreement that the town is entering into with the grant.
Yeah.
Our agreement is just to National Grid for our accounts that states that we know we owe a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But they understand we're paying through credits.
Yeah, so I guess I'd take a motion to allow, to allow the superintendent to take any action necessary for the National Grid LED light, lighting projects.
Or to pursue opportunities for lighting improvements in the school.
Yeah, I, I mean, well, this is in specific.
We don't have enough information, really, to, we need more. So you're not sure the credits will pay or you?
Well, there's a possibility that, I mean, I can't tell you, I can guarantee you a hundred percent that they will, but.
So why not, you would have our support to pursue, whatever. We would want to know, like, what the payback is if we had to pay the hundred and fifteen thousand and the credits weren't available. You know, it would be like, you know, what's the?
Could we, could we?
Where do we get the savings for electricity usage? You know, is it really worth it?
Oh, they, they did, they did do a calculation on that, and it does show a net positive cash flow with their estimated savings based on our current usage level. You know, because LED lighting obviously is gonna use up less, less energy. So they did show a, a net positive cash flow. They felt that, before I brought the credits to their attention, they felt that we would be able to absorb even the ten thousand dollars a month in savings. But I, I couldn't tell you I fully trusted that. You know, ten thousand's a lot of money to say, we're gonna save that with LED lighting.
Could we, could we look to approve the application of the credits that we've acquired so far to the hundred and sixteen thousand dollar debt that the project will essentially cost? And then if there are issues where, you know, the credits won't be enough to absorb the cost, we could bring back what the difference might be?
Sure.
For discussion. We could still send the information check that you want, as far as the, like, the cash flow and what the cost of that would be. I don't know if that would.
Phase, phase two of this project is, phase two of the project will undergo a fiscal viability review before approval. Is that?
That's the same thing. I'll come back to the board with that phase two before anything happens.
Oh, it's, I mean, I don't have any issue maybe of making a motion to allowing to use the credits for the purpose, you know, for the purposes of review. And if the credits will cover the cost of the project, the district's own cost of the project.
Wonderful.
Then we, you know, to allow you to engage in that. With also, that's my motion, that's a motion that'd probably be a good motion.
I'm sorry, but they're gonna do the lighting before it's completely paid, right? Because it's looking like installments from the credit, but the lights will be changed over before then. So if, if the credits do go down, then we are liable for whatever's left from the one fifteen.
We are liable for the one fifteen.
Regardless of.
That's right.
Okay.
And so that's the, outside of, like, we would have to have a plan.
Yes, that's what I was, that's, that was gonna be my next question, was shouldn't we have a plan in case that happens?
And it has to be done in the monthly installments. We can't just lump sum credits.
It looks that way. And I would advise not just doing a lump sum, well, either way, if we did the lump sum credit, we'd still be paying a bill if, if we exceeded them anyways. It means, I guess it's six of one, half dozen the other. I can ask them that question, maybe they'll accept that, I don't know.
Would you ask to accept the?
If we could lump sum the credits onto it?
We, can we go and, we can get an update in the next meeting on this?
Sure, sure.
They're still preliminarily working?
Well, they, they, the plan is for them to start work right at the end of the school year. It all depends on when supplies can come in, when they get the LED lighting. If they come in sooner, they do want to start sooner. They would just work second shift, so they're not there when the kids are there.
So, well, yeah, I guess the bottom line is it's a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar project that would cost us a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And we have the highly like, high likelihood that our credits will pay.
That's right.
For a good portion of that hundred and sixteen thousand.
Yeah, if not a hundred percent.
If not a hundred percent. So we're getting, you know, pretty much the Town of Blackstone has handed over half of their, their, their grant to the, to the hotness school.
It's the, our electricity is being paid for, though, by the generation, so.
Well, the.
Already covering the costs of electricity, so we.
It's covering the delivery side.
More credits because we use less electricity.
Yep. What will happen is, the credits are applied on the delivery side, which is with National Grid. We have a broker that has brokered our supply side with several different companies. I haven't, I haven't sat down with them yet. That supply side, we should see a reduction in the usage of, of the supply of electricity, because the LED lighting will, will generate a savings for us.
So we still get a bill for kilowatt?
We still do, yes, we do.
Free deliveries, yeah.
You know, plus we're paying the, the debt service on the solar project. That's a twenty-year agreement.
It's up to the committee if you want to authorize it, or if you want to.
I'd like to have more information at our next meeting.
When's our next meeting?
It is June eleventh, is June eleventh? I'll tell you right now. Oh, June thirteenth? Yeah, that's right, it's right on this. June thirteenth, thank you.
Does that put us in a hard place, though, if National Grid is ready to?
It, it may. I, I often talk to Scott because he's talked to him about what the scheduling of this. They're ready to go, they're just waiting on, on this. I told my kid to do anything without.
They're just putting pressure on us so they can get the job to do it.
Sure.
Right, we can be patient and.
So we, I mean.
Rush into it.
If it's a heck of a deal and you get further, you know, more information in the next week or so, we have to sort of a meeting, a quick meeting to.
That would be good.
Yeah, with May fourteenth as an alternative already, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Hopefully, we won't need that meeting for that purpose, yeah. Hopefully, we won't meet that meeting for that purpose, yeah.
What is it? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Is it just as simple thing as changing the lights, or is this, is there a possibility that they turn and say, well, we wanted to do this, but this needs to be upgraded first? And then it's like, there's nothing like that?
No, no, it's literally going in and changing, I think, ballasts and things and putting in the new light bulbs.
Okay.
From what I've experienced in my previous job, that's exactly what it is.
We did this at, I believe it was the complex.
Yes.
Right? We did that already, yeah, and I feel like we did the high school.
Yeah, sometimes they change the fixtures.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, it was the ballast, the ballast.
Right, yeah.
And all LED.
I just didn't know if it'd be like hitting...
It's a good deal.
The bulbs themselves, I think.
It's a good deal.
Yeah, Blackstone's a green community, so this is, I think, well, partnering up with National Grid for these, we, we've, I haven't, I don't know if we've done the streetlights yet, but there was discussion of if they're fully complete or not with the LEDs, streetlights, and so... But we can, if you, if the committee's comfortable with getting more information, we can, if we have to throw a quick meeting together to get approved in a couple of weeks, that's, that's, that's fine.
Can I make a request? Can I get a list of what the questions are and I'll make sure I have exactly what you need, so I, I answer everything?
Yeah, so if the, the credits pay our debt...
Yep.
You know, that's, we could vote on it right now, but it just seems like there's uncertainty about those credits.
We won't know until we, like, it's just, it's as the credits are being used, that we might use them faster.
No brainer to do it.
It would be helpful if I can, if I finish my schedule of how the credits have applied each month, to see what the trending is. So if it's a constant increase in credit, I think we're gonna, we'll be fine. But if it's an up and down, we haven't been paying, so I have to assume $163,000 credits goes right through. And I'll also follow up on the Schedule Z and ensure that if we do run out of credits here, we have the, the ability to move credits from another account because all the accounts show credit balances.
What do we have in here now? It's never, it's never been converted to CFL bulbs or halogen or incandescent.
I don't know.
LED.
No, that's okay, I wouldn't know.
I would think that a lot of the building would be LED already.
You would think so, yeah.
I didn't know there were that many types of light bulbs.
I just bring my light bulb to the store and look for the national...
I wish I'd say that after the words where you just said, Chuck.
So I did, I, I worked for Mass Save for 10 years.
Oh, wow.
Lighting, so I, I just...
Can you tell by the, aren't the LED ones like the, it's like you're entertaining them?
They have daylight, they have...
Aren't those...
They take a long time to brighten.
We don't have LED.
The room's dark and all of a sudden, it's like...
Like, that one looks really bright.
Daylight and soft light.
I don't know.
I don't know. So that's, I, I just would like to know more detail about, you know, exactly what we're getting into. But if it's just really not gonna cost us anything, we're using the credits at, then I think we should do it.
It's, it's no brainer, right?
Yeah.
Yep. All right, what I'll do is I'll put together trending for you. I'll find out about the Schedule Z, I think that'll be key because with the credits on the other accounts, we'll never exceed all of those in one building. And I'll make sure that that can happen, and I'll bring it back to you. It might, it might be like you said, Dan, that we need to do something, maybe interim, to get them so they can get started.
Go through the building.
And they didn't give you a deadline on this little deal, right?
No, no, they just wanted me to sign it right to go.
Scott did that with them, yes, yep.
You were, like, all our exterior, that's just interior?
Just interior. There's actually a request and a, it's not a grant, there's no grant funding to it, but there are the incentives that National Grid's offering to do the exterior. But I left that off the table until we get this finalized, see how this progresses.
I, I think, didn't we do the complex exterior, all LEDs?
I know we did the inside. I, I do remember that. And it was recent, a couple of years ago or something.
Yep.
If it costs us barely anything...
Yeah.
We should do it.
Should cost us nothing, I hope.
Yeah.
Just keep in mind that the town of Blackstone selected specific buildings that...
Yes.
With their grants, so...
Yep.
If they potentially don't see an interest in this, they will find other buildings.
Yeah, that's why I think we should move a little quickly.
Yeah. I can promise you that because the, this, people recommend certain buildings for the purpose of saving the...
Yep.
So, I, I don't wanna be difficult. I, I would like to, with your original motion to go ahead and approve, I, I think that I, I have a more clear understanding of the credits.
Okay.
And I would like to, your motion to allow Jason to move forward with this lighting project, I would be for that.
A motion made by Chuck.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. And any further discussion? And Mr. Superintendent, can this be on the next agenda for an update?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
On every agenda moving forward until we...
Yep. We'll do the trending and we'll do the Schedule Z as Joe mentioned, so we can see the credits on the other projects.
Yep.
And then any additional information that the committee wants, just, you know, shoot me a quick message, we'll make sure that everybody has it.
And if we also have, like, a resource or a contingency, just in case needed if the credits, you know...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on that? Thank you, thanks, Chuck. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, the ayes have it. Facilities report, is that coming from you, Mr. Superintendent?
Joe's gonna give it.
Scott's not here, so we won't talk about where he is because I'm a little jealous. But I'll just read through the report that he put together for you. At the high school, Liberty Gas replaced our old gas meter with a new meter on Wednesday, April 17th. This was just routine maintenance for, of Liberty Gas. The air in the heating system, industrial burner came out to replace the faulty automatic water feed valve, as well as a blocked air vent that was not allowing trapped air to exit the system. Under baseball and softball field, we have replaced an order for, we have placed an order for more infield mix to fill the low spots on the softball field. An update on this is the infield mix was delivered Thursday, the 25th, to be used on both boys and girls in fields for repairs. Tennis courts, the fence needed repair along the bottom to stop the curling up to allow, that allowed tennis balls to roll out of the courts. His update is the stakes were driven into the ground over the April break and to pull the bottom of the fence down, thus stopping the tennis balls from rolling out of the courts. Front steps, the section of the front steps that was repaired several years ago is, is lifting, lifting up, which caused a large chunk of concrete to come out. We are in the process of getting an estimate to have this section repaired before graduation. For the middle school, the spring break projects, all rooftop heating units have been, have had, will have their air filters changed, belts checked, bearings greased. This includes the 35 exhaust fans. His update is there are a few motors on some of the exhaust fans that will need to be replaced. Our electrician will be addressing this. The middle school had a power surge which caused the gen, the generator to start up and run. When the generator finished running, multiple alarms were coming from the control panel. FM generator diagnosed a bad circuit board, which is currently on order. In the, in the event of a power outage, the generator will still function as normal. I believe this is the complex. Air compressor, one of the compressors, compressor heads was making a loud noise. A and M compressor came out and shut one of the two compressor units down. They have ordered the necessary parts to make the repairs. Still waiting on parts to come in, though. Electrical issues, there are a few outlets in various classrooms and a classroom light fixture that is occasionally, that occasionally works. Our electrician will be making these repairs over the weekend. And then at Millville Elementary School, boiler and hot water tank, on Saturday, April 13th, during a building check, the custodian found that boiler number three in one of the two hot water tanks had lost power. Our electrician is looking into it. An update on that is the electrician found a loose connection in the main electrical panel that feeds both of these units, along with remote panel for pro, for the propane tank. Timer for the outdoor lighting system does not work. I had the electrician look into this while he was on site. He recommended replacing the timer and is working on getting us a price. For the past few years, the custodians have manually been turning the lights on for events by going into the panel and turning the breakers on and off. This timer controls parking lot lights, street lights, and outdoor building entrance lights. And that concludes Scott's report.
That'd be a great thing to fix. There are many little critters and not-so-little critters out. They're leaving late evenings in the dark. I'm grateful I'm a runner, that I can sprint in my car with my bag because there's coyotes and fox and all kinds of...
Beavers.
We heard someone sent it at you, though.
Yes, I may have been getting into the car and Jill came roaring past in her truck and sent a fox flushed out of the woods, running at me at 100 miles an hour.
I sent him that way.
May have been done intentionally. I moved very quickly. So thank you for fixing the lights, Joe.
All righty, so we will move on to school committee forum.
Just the facilities.
Did I miss something, update? Oh, requests, I have it right here in front of me. Trying to move this meeting along a bit. We have a, Mr. Superintendent, we have a few here?
Yeah, just a couple. French River, they run this graduate courses at the middle school every summer, so there's a request for that. The Dance Step of Greater Uxbridge has also made a request for space, and they have their insurance attached to that as well, so you can get a sense of the amount and their insurance coverage. That's actually a, a nice request, as far as the facilities and expense there for, for revenue for us. And then just the town administrator request for the auditorium, the MES auditorium for Monday. So there are three.
I make a motion to approve the use of facility requests.
Motion made by Tara, seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, the ayes have it. Now, school committee forum.
Matt? I'll just remind everybody about the District of One community event this weekend. It's actually grown over the past few days. So just today, I think, Ms. Remka announced that she has a Kung-Fu dance team, you know, they're gonna be doing a display and a routine. And then we just found out that we're gonna have the 501st Regiment, which is a, if you're familiar with cosplay or, you know, LARPing and all that kind of stuff, they do Star Wars. So there'll be probably about a half dozen to a dozen Star Wars characters roaming about to take pictures with, along with the, you know, the state police horses and the, you know, the buses and the fire engines and the helicopters and the, what else do we have? The canine units, the drones, the...
There's a lot. And then we've got our...
Axe throwing. I got axe throwing coming.
Yes.
Inflatable.
I was gonna say axe throwing. We have liability insurance.
Let's just say, this is inflatable.
Keep Jill away from the axes, please. Make sure nobody's seen.
So it's completely safe and, you know, non-harmful.
Wow.
So we, we're shaping up to have quite an event, so anybody out in the community, I know I had a chance to hang out at the Boys and Girls Club for a few minutes today and talking to some of the kids down there. They were super excited and making sure they go home and tell their parents. So tell your friends, tell your neighbors, tell your enemies, tell everybody.
It's gonna be great.
So I actually have something, too. There's been a new association put together for athletics, adult athletics, that'll happen in the area, in the town, Blackstone. It's going to be just recreational, non-competitive, wiffle ball, kickball, ultimate frisbee. So if you moms and dads or anyone in the towns wanna get together and have a little fun, look out for registrations for it.
Pickleball?
I wish.
Mr. Silver, he got Hurley Silver on that. He, he taught me how to play pickleball.
We'd have to have a pickleball course.
Tennis court, right?
Um, it's, it's different.
Pickleball's rising.
Yeah.
Up and coming.
Chuck, you, you have anything to add, or would you like to sign up for one of those event, wiffle ball?
Oh, you're gonna play, right? I'm gonna rope in Bethany.
Seem like an ultimate frisbee guy.
Carrie?
Just congratulations to our seniors because they will have graduated before our next meeting.
Yes. And Tara?
Just for, as far as promotions and stuff, I know we're talking about, I know seventh grade is also getting promotion because they're not gonna be eighth graders here. So they will have just a promotion ceremony on Monday, the 17th. And then they're also getting a farewell dance and field day. So just making sure that they leave here, well, the middle school, you know, with a little something as well.
Short stay.
What's that?
They had a short stay here at the middle school.
A short, yeah, yeah, they had a quick, but be good for them. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to thank the administration and the school committee for its all coming to a, ahead now with the years, the next year's fiscal year's budget. We have, Hillville's town meeting is Monday, Blackstone's finance committee hearing is the same day and, and with all the events with the seniors and, and everything else that you guys just plan coming up, it's a real busy time of the year, so. It's gonna be busy, so thank you to everybody and congratulations, seniors. I hope to see everyone there on Saturday, that's one to four.
One to four, yeah. One to four, for now.
Yeah.
For now, yes. And so with that, we are going to be going into executive session, which, and we will adjourn once we come out of executive session. So our upcoming school committee meetings are tentative May 14th, and then hopefully we don't need that one, and then June 13th would be our next one. With that, I am gonna ask for a motion to enter into exec, to, to go into executive session, to leave this meeting, to go into executive session, and I'll do a roll call vote. Motion made by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Roll call, Matt?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you very much, folks, and have a good night.